I would like to welcome you to the October 22nd meeting of the Richland 2 Board of Trustees. We met at 5:30 and went to executive session, and in fact, we're going to have another one after the meeting. But at this time, we're going to stand just a second and have an inspirational moment. Dr. Hamm's going to give that, and then we'll have the pledge of allegiance. Would you please stand?
I'd like to ask everyone to take a moment of silence to remember the families and victims of the shooting that took place yesterday at Sparks Middle School in Sparks, Nevada, and to appreciate the bravery of their teacher who died trying to keep them safe. Nelva Marquez Green, who lost her six-year-old daughter in the Sandy Hook shooting rampage rope, "Real heroes don't wear capes; they work in America's schools." Please pause in sorrow for the loss of children, adults, and in gratitude for teachers. Now if you'll join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dr. Hamm. Okay, at this time, we will go to approval of our current agenda. Do I hear a motion? I think Mr. Manning, were you going to do that?
For the consent agenda?
Yeah.
I move that we approve the consent agenda with the-
Well, that's the current agenda. Let's just go ahead and do that first. Okay, Mr. Specter, would you have the motion? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second is Brill.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? We'll move on next. Okay. We'll vote at this time? We're on there. We're going to change it then next. Does anybody vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Passed unanimously. Our next is our consent agenda, which does include approval of minutes, facilities report, technology report, budget update, student remission requests, personnel ratification. Do I hear a motion for that?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend that we approve the consent agenda with the exception of student number one under student expulsions, who I'd like to remove or deal with separately.
Second.
That's what I was looking at there. They're not on there.
Okay, then I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Let's go ahead. Vote on that. Motion?
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you for the vote. Is it unanimous? Our next item, six, is our time of special recognitions. Dr. McDaniel?
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board, Dr. Hamm, tonight we have several recognitions that I would like to present to you, and as we call your name, please come forward, and I'm going to tell you a little bit about each recognition as you come forward. Ms. Johnson's going to have your certificate. First, Venicia Johnson, Spring Valley High School social worker. She's a recent recipient of the 2013 Heart of the Region Award from the Benefit Bank. The Benefit Bank is a resource that allows trained staff to assist students and families to apply benefits such as Medicaid and SNAP. The Heart of the Region Award is given each year to the Benefit Bank counselor who not only completed an abundance of applications, but who also served as an important resource to the community in which she works. Lauren Carswell, the Benefit Bank regional coordinator, stated that Venicia was chosen because her willingness to go above and beyond for the clients that she works with and helps to link the Benefit Bank of South Carolina services to other organizations and schools. Congratulations, Ms. Johnson. Next up, we have Westwood High School's media specialist, Kathy Carroll. Ms. Carroll was named the Region Four Director for the American Association of School Librarians Affiliate Assembly at the 2013 American Library Association's annual convention. Ms. Carroll will facilitate communication among the affiliates in Region Four, which includes South Carolina, North Carolina, Virginia, West Virginia, Kentucky, and Tennessee. Her responsibilities include planning regional conferences for Region Four, state media specialists presidents, and state delegates, and drafting Region Four concerns and accommodations for the organization's affiliate assemblies executive board. Congratulations, Ms. Carroll. Next, I'd like to invite up the Forest Lake Elementary Technology Magnet School representatives. They've received national accolades for their Eagle Expressions Literary Magazine. First, it received the Outstanding Yearbook and Literary Magazine Award for the last seven years from the American Scholastic Press Association. And secondly, they received another award. For the second year in a row, they've received the Eagle Expressions First Place with Special Merit Award from the American Scholastic Press. Eagle Expressions is a literary magazine that also serves as the school yearbook. It has pictures of all students, as well as a writing sample from each child. Thank you very much, and congratulations, Forest Lake.
Go ahead. Okay. Two certificates. Okay.
Two pictures.
Got a picture with both of them.
Thank you very much. Great recognitions for our faculty and those who work in our schools. Our next item is student focus. I'm going to... Dr. Hamm, could you direct us to that?
I think Ms. Mallette is going to do that introduction.
Okay, tonight, we're delighted to have Pontiac Elementary School, Katie Barber, principal, to present some exciting things from her students. So I'm going to turn it over to Katie.
Welcome guests. We welcome you to Pontiac Elementary School, the home of the Parrots. I'm Karen Taylor, and I'm this year's Teacher of the Year, and I would like to welcome you again. Pontiac is one of only five Richland 2 schools that are working on their Green Steps certification. Tonight, we'd like to showcase some of the components of our Green Steps program. We are going to start with soil conservation through composting, and then recycling, and lastly, our energy patrol. Sergeant Jackson, are you ready?
Yes, ma'am. (laughing). Sound off.
Yeah. Yeah. Wow.
Wiggly Worm here. I just want to tell you a little something about composting. Composting is the earth's favorite thing, so nutritious, so delicious, it makes me want to sing. Making plant food instead of the landfill to get peace of mind. Save the kitchen scrap that don't go in the trash. Make your own bin if you're short on cash. Composting. Away recycle. Weep, weep. Composting. Away recycle. You take some fallen leaves and you rake them from the ground. Pine needles, sawdust, newspapers lying around, put them in a bin. You can put it in your backyard. You can just toss it in. It's not so hard. You got to mix it up. You got to wet it down. But it's right by yourself, and it make no sound. When it's all done, you feed it to your plants, make them grow big and strong, make the petals all dance. Composting. Away recycle. Weep, weep. Composting. Away recycle. Weep, weep. Composting. Away recycle. Weep, weep. Composting. Away recycle. Composting. Away recycle. Composting.
Ready, team?
Yes, sir.
R-E-C-Y-C-L-E.
R-E-C-Y-C-L-E.
Recycling is the team for me.
Recycling is the team for me.
Every week we empty bins.
Every week we empty bins.
So we can fill them up again.
So we can fill them up again.
Recycling keeps the planet green.
Recycling keeps the planet green.
As well as keeps the landfills green.
As well as keeps the landfills green.
When I see a full boot bin.
When I see a full boot bin.
It makes me happy and makes me great.
Makes me happy.
So join us, won't you, every day?
So join us, won't you, every day?
To help us make a world of change.
To help us make a world of change.
One, two.
One, two.
Three, four.
Three, four.
Out the door.
Out the door.
We are Energy Patrol. We are Energy Patrol. We say energy is how we roll. We say energy is how we roll. If you care about the world. If you care about the world. We check classrooms every day. We check classrooms every day. Lights turned off when you're on your way. Lights turned off when you're on your way. Buses off and windows closed. Buses off and windows closed. We are Energy Patrol. We are Energy Patrol. Saving energy's in our soul. Saving energy's in our soul. If you care about this world. If you care about this world.
Thank you so much for your attention. And board members, I hope you will enjoy the book that is a gift to you, Whose Garden Is It? And it goes with the theme of our theme this year, We Dig Pontiac.
That's cute. Thank you. I don't know if I want the patrol after me, do you? Anybody out there? Golly, they're enthusiastic. All right, we'll let you guys sort of leave out if y'all would like to. Some children. Okay, at this time, we have our first time of public participation. Anyone sign up? We had no one sign up, but at this time, I'll open the floor up to... Is there anyone here that would like to address the board? Give you three minutes to do, as long as it pertains to the district. Anybody at this time? Okay, I see no hands, so we'll move on to our next, which is our voting on executive session items. I know we're going to have a pull-out on the expulsions. Do you want us to just do that by hand, or is that... Are you related for that? Can you do that for us electronically? Okay, Mr. Manning?
On the expulsions, I pull out student number one. Number one.
Is there a second?
Second.
A second. There's a motion, second. Everything else is as is. I came up on your screen. Everybody voted? Oh, Mr. Jackson, I'm sorry. Thank you. The motion passes seven to zero. Our next item is for student appeals. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that on student appeals, student number one, number two, and number three, appeals being denied and referred to Blackwood Academy?
Second.
Do you want to do any more?
Well, we're going to pull four and five out. Would you like me to go and do the rest and exclude those, sir?
Yes, do the ones we're not pulling now.
Okay, then. Also, on student number six, we're going to deny the appeal, refer to Blackwood Academy. Student number seven, we're going to uphold the appeal, allow the student to return back to their home school. Student number eight, we're going to deny the appeal, refer to Blackwood Academy, Laredo Act. Student number nine, we're going to deny the appeal and refer to Blackwood Academy, Laredo Act. Student number 10, we're going to deny the repeal... the appeal, refer the student to Blackwood Academy. And student number 11, we're going to uphold the appeal and refer the student back to his home school on strict probation.
Second that.
All of them, or just all of them?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. On student number one, two, and three, we're going to deny the appeals and refer those students to Blackwood Academy. Student number four and five, we're going to pull out. Student number six, we're going to deny the appeal and refer to Blackwood Academy. Student number seven, we're going to uphold the appeal, refer the student back to his home school. Student number eight and number nine, we're going to deny those appeals and refer those students to Blackwood Academy with the Laredo Act. Student number 10, we're going to deny the appeal and refer the student to Blackwood Academy. Student number 11, we're going to uphold the appeal and refer the student back to his home school on strict probation.
Student number seven is what I'm questioning. I thought you said-
Uphold the appeal.
Uphold it.
Appeal.
That's correct.
We agree.
Pardon?
We agree. That means we agree with it. We're going to uphold it.
I want to pull student seven out. I thought we... I didn't want to uphold the appeal on that one.
That's the first thing I'd heard. I thought we were here. Okay, we'll pull out everybody... We'll pull out four, five, and seven.
We agree on that.
I know. But we agree on it.
We agree on that.
Student number seven, we agreed to go back to their home school with strict probation.
So you're upholding the appeal?
That's right.
No, that was incorrect.
You don't-
That's not incorrect. The appeal was to appeal the expulsion, and we are honoring that by upholding the appeal.
Honoring the appeal.
Yeah, that is correct. The student's appealing the expulsion.
We can either deny or oppose.
And we're upholding that decision.
Sorry about that.
We just don't do that often.
I just wanted to make sure that we did the right thing in the whole situation, so I apologize, but I want to make sure we were correct in what we were doing.
Sure.
I apologize.
No, no problem. I find myself-
I just wanted to make sure that that was handled.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that... Is everybody... Do I hear a second?
A second.
Second.
Second. Ms. Brill, any further discussion on the nine students that were... Any discussion on those nine students? If not, call for the vote.
Didn't come up for me. No. Yes. Unless I meant something else. If you're not actually on the main screen, it doesn't bother you. Okay?
Thank you very much. It passed seven unanimously. Motion passed. Now, do I hear another motion for student four?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. On student number four, I move that we deny the appeal and refer the student to Blackwood Academy.
Second.
Is there any discussion on this student? The motion is to deny and refer to Blackwood. Any discussion? Hearing none, I call for a vote.
Did you get that, Joe? Yes.
Passes four to three. Do I hear a motion of student number five?
On student number five, Mr. Chairman, I move we deny the appeal and refer the student to Blackwood Academy.
Can I make a second with a friendly motion? Or friendly motion, then second?
That's Mr. Jackson.
Mr. Jackson, can I make a friendly motion?
Yes, yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
That I want this child, if it's proved for Blackwood Academy, to... And I'm not sure if you will automatically put him into counseling, drug counseling, and Laredo Act, all that. Okay. Second.
Any further discussion on this student for expulsion, which was to deny the appeal but refer to Blackwood? Hearing none, you can vote at this time. Motion fails. Do I hear another motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we uphold the recommendation for expulsion on student number five.
Second.
I second it.
Thank you very much. Okay, this to uphold the recommendation for expulsion. Okay, you can vote now. Okay, it passes four to three. And that concludes our student appeals. Now, we have a couple of motions from our legal... contractual matters and legal matters, contractual matters, ten-year plan, motion.
Contractual matters. Legal matters is kind of a first.
Mr. Chair, I have a motion to update our ten-year plan. The update being performed by MBCon for $62,000 in the funds coming out of our general fund budget.
Second. Ms. Anderson, any discussion? Okay, hearing none. We have to show hands. All in favor, raise your right hand. I believe that's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, question. Can you or someone from staff answer, when was the last time we had a ten-year study done?
The last one.
Thank you.
It's time, isn't it?
Just wanted to put a recognition, Chairman.
You're right. This is... Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I make a motion that we authorize administration to procure on an as-needed basis legal services from one or more of the seven law firms that responded to the district's 2013 RFP for legal services at the district's approved hourly fee structure.
Second.
Second, my Ms. Specter. Okay, since this again, this will be electronic. All those in favor of the motion? Any discussion this time? Any discussion?
This is under legal. The under legal.
All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve to participate in the grant from the Sheriff... Richland County Sheriff Department Office to provide four school resource officers and to cover the district's portion of the cost with general funds.
Second.
Second.
Second, my Ms. Anderson.
Do you want me to clarify that for the public?
This... Yes, if you'd like to.
The Sheriff Department has received a grant, wrote a grant, and they received it. And we... They were looking out for us for the additional social... Excuse me. Additional SOR officers for our elementary schools. So that's why we're putting that in there. I just thought the public might be interested in knowing why we're going this route.
So, do we vote? Okay, all of those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Okay, good. All right. I believe that concludes our executive session items at this time. Our next item is old business. No action requested, a report from elementary 19, student assignment plan, some options. Dr. McDaniel, I believe I'll turn that over to you at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Since our last board meeting, we have reviewed logistical considerations with individual board members for discussion, and also with parent representatives from Lake Carolina Elementary. Tonight, I'm just going to walk through some of the major logistical considerations as we discuss and think through whether to go forward with a K-235 approach or whether to go with a K-5, K-5 approach. Three of the main logistical considerations where we have received a lot of questions are the walkways and bike paths, traffic, and buses. This is a map that shows Lake Carolina here. This is a map that shows, uh, Lake Carolina here and Elementary Nineteen here. And you can see, one of the walkways will come down Bud Keef Road and go along Kelly Mill and get back onto our property. Another walkway is scheduled across the wetlands, a path across the wetlands that goes into the back of our property. And then finally, walking through Ashland would be the third, um, walkway. We have received, uh, verbal permission from the Department of Transportation to do the sidewalk along Kelly Mill Road. We are working with them to put a guardrail up, uh, as part of that project. And again, we're just scheduling meetings to get them out. We don't, uh, uh, think we'll have a problem with that, but we're still working through that issue. Um, we've met with representatives from Lake Carolina Development to discuss the, uh, path across the wetlands. And, um, they have a permit, they're reviewing the permit to see what they're allowed to, to put in, and we're going to work with them to put in a path there. We received an email, uh, reassuring, reassuring us today. We received an email from, uh, Lake Carolina Development, um, basically stating their commitment to, uh, uh, working with us and making this happen. And then finally, we're also, um, talking with Lake Carolina Development. There are sidewalks through most of the Ashland neighborhood, but there are some stretches, uh, some small areas, um, where sidewalks have not been put in place. And we're working with Lake Carolina Development and also, uh, homeowners associations to, um, encourage to close up a couple of those gaps. Second major, um, logistical consideration is, um, uh, traffic flow and car rider drop off, things of that nature. And one of the fortunate things about our, our current situation with Lake Carolina and Elementary Nineteen is that they both have two car rider drop offs, one in the front and one in the back. And you can see on the, uh, map, if I can get my laser pointer to work, uh, that coming up Lake Carolina Boulevard allows access to either go into Lake Carolina into the back, to go down Bud Creek, Keef Road. Well, we will have a crossing guard and traffic guard there to allow turns. You can also come down and go out near the Y and around about past the Y and back over. Certainly, uh, folks from this part of the, uh, uh, development and the neighborhoods in this part of the development can choose to go up Bud Keef Road and turn in. They can choose to go up to Kelly Mill and turn in, or go left to Nineteen monitored by a traffic guard. And then they can also go in and around, uh, down, um, Hardscrabble Road and take a right. And then finally, folks have the option of driving through to the second car rider drop off that's within, uh, within that area. Uh, this slide just demonstrates, um, the, uh, walkways and the, uh, and the path, but I wanted to point out, um, for bus transportation, right now, the, the, the border is a mile and a half from Lake Carolina Elementary, and that's down here by this bridge. And so we do not provide bus transportation, we're not funded to provide bus transportation by the state within a mile and a half radius. If we go to a K two, three, five configuration, uh, we would start the mile and a half from Elementary Nineteen, which would roughly put it around, uh, the main, uh, main entry by the fountain. And so any of the neighborhoods that connect in there, we would, um, offer bu- bus service. If part of the neighborhood is, is outside of the mile and a half, we would do all of the neighborhood. So this area here would be, um, able to ride buses. If we went a, um, K five, K five route, then we would have independent buses depending on where the lines are to, to cover both schools independently. Uh, we don't see major shifts in the, the walkways. If we do, um, K two, three, five or K five, K five, we think they'll be very similar, uh, if not identical. And in terms of traffic patterns, whether we do K two, three, five or K five, K five, uh, the number of students and car riders will be distributed across multiple campuses, which will help, uh, lower traffic. And, um, with, um, different scenarios that we've looked at, you'll, you'll see that, um, the traffic flow should be improved, uh, again, in, in either situation, but particularly in K five, K five. This is just a, a site plan for the, um, for the school. And you can see, one of the sidewalks we discussed was coming down, uh, Kelly Mill, uh, down Bud Keef and turning on Kelly Mill and getting onto our property. The, uh, wetlands, uh, path across the wetlands would come into our property here in the southern piece and connect up. And then finally, uh, another walkway would come down, um, with sidewalks down, uh, through this road into the back. Uh, you'll see the main car rider line coming in, the front of the school off of Kelly Mill that drops off in the back. Secondary car rider line coming in through Ashland, drops off in the back as well. And finally, the bus drop off, drops off in the same location, which maximizes, um, efficiency of, uh, supervision, so that all students are getting on and off in the same, uh, general area. There's a picture of the school from, uh, it's been, actually, it's been a little month. I can see some things that have happened that aren't on that picture, but you can see, uh, coming out of the ground there again with the, um, main entry, secondary en- entry, and bus rider entry coming into the back. Couple of other logistical considerations that we discussed, uh, not only with, um, uh, principals, but also with parents. Um, uh, if we go a K two, three, five route, we're suggesting, uh, a start time for the K two school, which is existing Lake Carolina. Uh, be about seven forty-five in the morning with students being dropped off, uh, beginning around seven fifteen. We would start the three, five school around eight oh five with, uh, uh, drop off starting around seven thirty. Um, in discussing with principals and with parents, we felt this was sufficient time, uh, for staggered start to help alleviate traffic. And if you did happen to have students at both schools, sufficient time for drop off. Uh, we also talked about, um, uh, if we go K five, K five, we could still implore, um, employ a staggered start, um, as well. One piece that I, I didn't mention on the, um, uh, bus solution as we think through, uh, how to handle buses, um, if we go a K two, three, five approach, um, one of the suggestions that came out of transportation, which we think works very well, is to have, uh, Lake Carolina actually become a bus stop. And so in essence, students could walk to, uh, a fourth grade student could walk with their second grade younger sibling to Lake Carolina, and they could choose to continue walking on to, um, the three, five school, or they could get on the bus at the bus stop at Nineteen and take the bus the rest of the way. Similarly, in the afternoon, a student could choose to ride the bus from Nineteen and get off at the bus stop at Lake Carolina and then walk home with their younger sibling, uh, or they could, uh, walk over, or they could just walk home. So, uh, we're, we're trying to give as many, um, uh, options, uh, to, to families, uh, as we can based on, um, uh, the feedback and questions that we've received. Playgrounds and furniture, um, if we go, uh, K five, K five, we would handle this as we always do, standard operating procedure. The new school would, um, put in their playgrounds and furniture from their existing budget. If we go a K two, three, five, um, we would take some of the older, larger furniture and move it to, um, the three, five school and use the existing budget to backfill for appropriate sized furniture for the, uh, K two school. And then similarly, uh, with playgrounds, we would review what playground equipment makes sense at which school, move it in, and we can handle that all within our existing budget. Terms of school choice, if we go, um, if we go with a K two, three, five, um, the idea is that we would treat, um, that as one school with two campuses and you would apply for choice to attend that school. And so if you were accepted into, um, say, the three, five school as a fourth grader and you had a younger sibling, that younger sibling, if they were in first grade, would be automatically accepted into the K two program, and they would matriculate through via our sibling exception. So we think that would work very well. Uh, if we go a K five, K five route, the, uh, applications for choice would be, uh, would be independent, uh, of each school. Uh, one thing that we want to point out, um, with, uh, K five, K five route, um, we would be recommending, um, I, I'm sorry, with the, uh, yeah, with the K five, K five. We would be recommending, uh, that fifth graders be grandfathered and allowed to stay because of the close proximity of the school, the density of population, which prompted us to build a school, um, so close to the other. Uh, in that situation, we would recommend the grandfathering, but that would likely mean that there would be, um, one, maybe two, but probably one fifth grade teacher at the new school for the first year, but that would matriculate out and that would allow rising fifth graders to finish their last year at Lake Carolina. Uh, in terms of, uh, students, uh, attending Lake Carolina via expanded choice or sibling exception or employee choice, our recommendation, if we go a K five, K five route, is to take those students and distribute them, uh, from a random lottery, fifty percent to attend Nineteen, fifty percent to attend Lake Carolina. Uh, and that's for employee choice and, um, uh, expanded choice. The only exception, if you are a staff member and you worked at Lake Carolina or worked at Nineteen, which we have a very small number in that category, um, we would recommend that, uh, they be allowed to go to school where their, uh, parent teaches. Um, and so the rationale for doing that would be to help distribute the students so that we could draw the lines in a manner that would work well both short term and long term. Terms of academics, we've discussed on a couple of occasions that, um, the K two, three, five, uh, configuration and the K five configuration, there's no research that really indicates a, um, uh, a positive correlation with student achievement. It really gets down to the, uh, te- teacher in the classroom and the quality of leadership in the school, and we think we're going to be in good shape whether we go K five, K five or K two, three, five. Library books, media center, um, similar to, um, furniture, if there are some resources that would be more appropriate for upper level students, we would move those to the new school and, uh, then use, uh, existing, uh, budget to backfill, um, at, at, uh, the K two school. If we go K five, K five, again, standard operating procedure there. Um, school curriculum and programs, uh, I know that Dr. Barry and Mr. Williams are already collaborating and discussing, um, regularly, uh, the programs and curriculum at each schools. If there's K two, three, five, there will certainly be a, uh, a very, um, close coordination of efforts. Um, and, um, uh, if we go K five, K five, I know they'll still collaborate and work very closely together. In terms of child development, if we go K two, three, five, we will have, uh, recommend that there be, uh, a second Spears Creek Child Development Program, uh, opened at the K two school. If we go K five, K five, we would recommend that a Spears Creek Program be opened at, uh, Elementary Nineteen and the existing program at Lake Carolina remain at Lake Carolina. Dr. Mossa Taylor has told me on multiple occasions that we have the capacity in terms of demand to, or we have the demand rather to, um, open up another program. We continue to monitor that. We'd like to do that with the opening of this school. Uh, in terms of teachers, if we go K two, three, five, uh, distribution of teachers would be along grade levels and that, we have procedures in place with, um, selecting teachers to, uh, move. We look at volunteers, we look at last hired, and we also look at balance and appropriate, uh, complimentary in terms of experience, et cetera. It was K five, K five, standard operating procedure. School rules, regulations, dress code, again, K two, three, five would be highly coordinated. Again, the concept of one campus, uh, one school, two campuses. If we go K five, K five, that would be independent, but I, I do know, again, I want to reiterate that, uh, Mr. Williams and Dr. Barry are talking very closely and coordinating that, and they very much want to, um, uh, partner with parents, partner with the community to ensure that the rules, regulations and the culture, I'll throw that in now, are, um, established and remain consistent with the desires of the, uh, of the community. And with that, I, uh, have, I've run through very quickly a lot of logistical considerations that we've discussed, um, and with that, I'd be happy to, uh, answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for Dr. McDaniel or Will, or anybody willing to answer? Any questions?
Mr. Chair, I don't have any questions, but I'd like to move it to, um, add it to an action item for the agenda for the next board meeting. Second.
Well, we'll just, we'll just, we'll make the agenda.
I would like for the board to meet prior to the next board meeting. I don't know whether we're going to do it in executive session or if we want to set it an evening so that the board can meet prior to coming to a vote.
Well, we'll, we'll talk about it in executive session. If that's the will of the board, we'll do that. Okay. Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, thank you, Dr. McDaniel. All right.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Uh, let me s- say after, uh, our last board meeting and, uh, how much I appreciate tonight, um, Dr. McDaniel and the staff, Will and others, for providing a much more thorough, much more detailed, um, presentation with regards to both options at the same time. And, and, and it's been very helpful. And like Ms. Anderson, I would echo what she has said, it's also created in, in my mind now, uh, e- even more, uh, questions, uh, to have them to explain and discuss. So, thank you for doing that. It's going to help us tremendously as a board, uh, be able to come to a, a decision, uh, with the opportunity to meet as a board and then to be able to vote at our next meeting. So thank you very much for your work on that.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you very much. Uh, item ten two is improving academic achievement, and this is, we're still working on, uh, two items tonight, which would be Common Core, uh, continuation of that and leadership, our leadership program. Uh, Sue Mellett.
Thank you. Um, Dr. Fleming, I'll begin, um, with this particular, uh, part of it, and then Dr. Parker will, uh, join in on the leadership. Um, you have received a packet of information, quite a bit of information, and, uh, we sent it out to you again this past week, so kind of refresh your memory. I just want to walk through a couple of things that, uh, we can highlight for you. The configuration map that's found on page, um, two in your packet really so- shows the roadmap that we're using to gauge the awareness, as well as moving from the awareness to full implementation as far as the standards are concerned. And so that's how we're really looking at it. We're looking at, um, the curriculum and unit planning, um, assessment, analysis of data, uh, just a couple of those things. The implementation structure is again found on the same page, and it is the structure that we're using to really, how we are going to implement this. And we have a district leadership team, implementation team. We have a district implementation team. Then each school has a team, implementation team, head by, headed up by their, uh, principal. And then that goes to the team leader or the grade level, depending, our grade level, um, leader, depending on the, uh, elementary middle or high. And then that filters down into the teacher and the student, and that's where we really want to get our common core right there with them. So that's our implementation structure. You have our focus for twenty thousand thirteen, and, uh, formative assessment is something that we're looking at very carefully, uh, providing feedback to students based on their learning and how well they're learning the standards. Um, so that's a very important part of it. Uh, up, understanding and implementing the math practice standards, um, and how do you ask higher order text-based questions? A lot of this is based on the smarter balanced. We're not sure if that's the, uh, program that we're going to use for assessment or not, but regardless, our students will be prepared. Um, and then we're reviewing and revising our writing program. Our, um, uh, district in-service was held last Thursday, the seventeenth, and each school held its own implementation, uh, program. And they focused on, um, what was important as far as formative assessment, supporting claims with evidence, and this was using the digital tools. Our, um, ITS and, and media specialists and others worked with our teachers to help them, uh, sort of guide through that. And then how do we implement the math standards? And so a survey was sent out to them, uh, to complete, and we'll be hearing from that, uh, shortly. Um, we also have a snapshot, we call a school system snapshot, and that really gives you, uh, or gives us a, a way of looking at patterns. What is it that we're seeing in a school? It's not an evaluative thing. It is simply to look at patterns and where we need to focus our attention. Um, we're looking at classroom environment, we're looking at student engagement, instructional practices that teachers are using. Um, what do we observe in the ELA and how they're shifting to meet the common core, literacy and the content areas, and what are we seeing with, uh, math shifts and the technology and how that's used to integrate, uh, the common core. And then we have parent resources that we have, um, shared with you several examples. We have, um, are delighted to say that our, uh, website is up and it's a, still a work in progress. But we do have acc- our parents will have access to those, um, opportunities there to look at some programs and some steps and, um, suggestions, if you will, for them to work with their children at home. We even have one from the military, uh, that will help with our military folks as well. Um, so it's available for our parents. We've also had a parent focus group that we, uh, Ms. Gregory and I met with, um, a couple of weeks ago. And so we're getting input from our parents as to, as far as what they need and what they feel comfortable with. Um, and our next steps, um, what we have completed so far is, um, the snapshot. We're doing that now. Each one of our teams, elementary, middle and high school are going in and doing these with the administration to see those patterns. And we will discuss those when we gather all that data a little bit later, uh, this fall. Um, we're also, uh, looking at the publisher's criteria. Um, what is it that we need to do? What materials, what programs, what software is really the, the best that we can use to help our students move forward? So we're really looking at that very carefully, and that's something that, uh, we're excited about doing. Um, and it will determine, you know, what is the appropriateness of the programs and the materials, uh, that we're using. Um, we'll also be fine tuning our ELA and math standards and, as well as our, um, writing program. So that's pretty much an overview of what was sent to you, and I'll be happy to answer any questions. Um, if there are no questions, then I'll turn it over to Dr. Parker.
Question? Uh, Ms. Mellett, on the, uh, snapshot.
Yes ma'am.
You will have, who will go and perform this assessment? Who will be?
Who is?
This looks like an assessment to me, am I correct?
Okay. The snapshot is really, uh, looking at the patterns of what we're seeing in the classroom.
So who will be doing that?
It will be our team leaders, um, at, at each grade level. It will be our teacher specialist, along with the, um, principal and administration. And so it's not, it's not to look at each individual school or ea- excuse me, each individual teacher. It's really to look at the school as a whole and what we see, what are patterns that are emerging? And that will help us determine what next steps we need to take.
So will the same team do the snapshots for each school or will it be different teams?
Elementary teams will do the elementary, middle school. Elementary teams will do the elementary, middle school, our leadership, their team, Dr. Marsha Mosley, they will be doing the middle school, and then Emily Manigault will be doing with the high school when we get those folks on board. But we are hoping to have, I know the elementary will be finished with the snapshot in December, and we're still hiring folks for our middle and high school, so it might be a little bit later for them, but we will look at those patterns and debrief and really decide where we need to go from there.
Okay, so this should be a valuable tool to see where we are and where we need to be.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and my next question is, I had a friend, a parent, to call me about a third grader, teacher is telling them not to do cursive, everything has to be typed on the computer, are we actually doing that? We're discontinuing?
Well, we haven't really taught cursive writing, per se, for a long time. We do teach it at some point, but I think because we're moving toward assessment on the computer, then you were not seeing as much of that, and...
So it kind of concerned me when I heard that, that we're going to have children who can't even read cursive writing, particularly with those people who do not have computers. Your older generation may not have computers, so they may write. Say if a grandmother writes a child a card, and that child has not been taught cursive writing, he can't read the card from the grandmother. I mean, why are we going that route without doing both? Can somebody help me with that? Because I just think that, I, I understand we're going towards technology, but I also think that children need to do both, because if the computers break down, if there's a blackout, or whatever the case may be, they need to be able to read writing. We're, I think we're relying too much on technology, and is this something that came down from the State Department, or is it something from the federal? How did we get there?
I think we've just slowly moved from directly teaching, and I'm not saying we don't teach it, but I don't think the emphasis is, is much in the last few years on cursive writing. They are taught how to write, how to print, but I don't think the emphasis has been as strong in the cursive as it has been in the past.
And I would...
I'm sorry, I was going to say, I'd like to add one clarification, make sure everybody knows, we still have kids write. We're not saying don't write.
Yes.
But it's been, I don't know, probably over the last maybe ten years even, the emphasis on learning all the rules about cursive writing has been on a steady decline, but I don't want anybody to leave here thinking that we don't want kids to write.
No, no, no. They write, and that's why we're looking at our writing program, to make sure it's articulated from elementary, middle, and high.
Well, you might want to check with all of your, I'm not going to call the school out, but I would ask you to check, because a third grade grader was told not to write, it must be turned in, typed, or the child would fail the, the grade for that.
I'll be happy to check into that.
And I don't think that that's right. I think our children need to have knowledge of writing, and not only that, I think we need to have classes on teaching them banking, financing, and filling out applications, and writing resumes. It's amazing how many children cannot, that graduate and cannot perform those actual duties.
And I appreciate your concerns, and I will certainly look into that, but again, as Dr. Hamm said, we do a lot of writing, we continue to do an awful lot of writing. Some of them do produce it on the computers, but some still turn it in, but I'll check on the other that you mentioned.
Yeah, but this child was told that he could not turn it in, and face it, not every household is fortunate enough to have a computer for a child to do their homework on a computer, so I just want us to be sensitive to that fact, and that's why I thought it was necessary that I bring it up.
Okay, thanks.
I, I think too, Ms. Anderson, that this actually is a, a national conversation that's, that's going on, as Dr. Hamm said, and it's certainly not endemic to Richland Two, but it's literally all across the nation, the discussion of to what degree does cursive writing play a role in, in the educational system, literally in America, and so I also don't want to leave out thinking that this is only an issue that Richland Two is grappling with, but it is, it is literally, it's a conversation that's ongoing on, on a national level, so I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you, and I, I thought it was on a national level, but I just wanted to know exactly where it was coming from, and maybe that's something those of you who are attending FRE in, in January can address.
Ms. Anderson, I'd also like to say, since my daughter's in third grade, and, and actually this started in second grade, there are times where they turn in written work, and there are times where they are required to turn in typed work, and in some instances, they write it first and then they go back and type it, but I have seen both last year and this year instances where she has had to do writing, in fact, we talk about Common Core, she's now having to write out sometimes how she figures out her math problems and those things that are part of Common Core, so I don't know about that particular classroom, I don't want to comment on that, but I, I have seen, now, cursive writing, no, but...
But they are doing the writing, you're, you're right.
But I learn cursive, and I never write anything in cursive, except my name.
Thank you.
Sometimes.
Other questions? Good questions. Okay.
Okay, leadership. Our title for leadership development here in Richland School District Two is called Ventures and Leadership. Some of you have been on the board for a while, probably recognize that from the mid two thousands. You've each received a report about our leadership development, and we have it divided into tiers. Tier one is titled Leading Up, and that's, that focuses on all levels of employees, employees that apply to participate in this program, they have to have the recommendation of their supervisor, and I think the limited number is about, we limit the number to between twenty-five and thirty-five employees, and this is for all levels of employees. Then tier two, we have aspiring school leaders, and this focuses on teachers, administrative assistants, and on assistant principals wanting to move up in the role of leadership within a school. We meet the third Tuesday of every month, we've had two meetings so far, and we start at four o'clock and end about five fifteen, and this is open to anyone who wants to participate, since it's on their time at four o'clock, and we don't have to take anyone out during the day or anything like that. A variety of topics are offered to provide an opportunity to enhance one's leadership skills, and we also have, and I'm sorry, for tier one, we also have a, a team of folks who developed the curriculum for Leading Up, and they are past participants of the Leadership Academy, so Leading Up is really a revised, a revision of the old Leadership Academy. Tier two, we also have a team, and they are here this evening, of school principals who provide the, the opportunities and design the curriculum for the aspiring school principals or leaders. Tier three is, is principal development. All principals are required to submit a leadership plan, which they've all turned in by September the thirtieth, and these plans are going to be reviewed by Dr. Hamm, myself, and Sue Mallett, meeting with every single principal this year, looking at their plans and what they're focusing on for the year. Also, how would they evaluate, whether or not they've met, they've met their goals or not? All of their goals have to be related to the four district priorities set forth in the district. And we meet with the principals on a monthly basis, Debbie meets with them on a monthly basis, and we also have our new principals, and they have a second meeting, so we really meet with them twice a month regarding any issues, any concerns, and talk about finance. We're starting off with finance this month with all the new principals, I think it's on Wednesday. All new principals also have to participate as required in the state principal induction program through the State Department of Education, and all principals, as required by state law, are evaluated on a yearly basis unless they're a brand-new principal. They, they get to get by the first year, we work very closely with them, and basically that's it. So there's something going on every, every month with all levels.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
With the, the principals and the plan, plans that they turn in.
Yes.
Is, is part of that evaluation of their plan to look at data and sort of issues across the district and make sure that, that, you know, it's not principals only providing what they think, but also sort of a, you know, top-down look-through of where problems are?
Right, and they have, there, there are two things dealing with the professional development plan, one is their personal plan, what are they going to participate, and what are they going to do for themselves to make sure they're on top of things in their schools, based on the four priorities set forth by the district. Then also you have your state mandated evaluation plan, which I think there are nine components to that, and one of those is instructional leadership, staff development, all of that that we'll be looking at. We'll be meeting with them about mid-year, and we've met with them in August, meet with them again mid-year, and then again at the end of the year.
And do you guys give them any guidance as far as like summer?
Oh, yeah, we don't let anything get by. We try very hard not to, if it's brought to our attention, or if we see there's an issue we addressed right, then we don't wait.
I guess I'm just getting across the idea that, I mean, we like each school not being, as we've said before, McDonald's, but also there's some common themes, so they, those common themes that we want to see are sort of provided to.
Right, well, the, the main focus when it comes to instruction is?
Common Core. Thank you.
Are our new principals assigned a mentor?
Yes, they are.
My question would be, there are a lot of different programs for ventures in leadership. Did we get a template from the State Department, or how did we come up with devising our program? Is what I want to know.
With, we have a design team, what we call a design team, school leaders that have come together to develop the curriculum for Leading Up, they've come in together to work closely with me on aspiring school leaders, and as principals, that's pretty much the executive staff, all of us are involved.
Okay, because I know there's several different templates on ventures in, in leadership, and I didn't know what kind of exact template we were using, was it one that the district devised, or if it was...
It's, it's based on, I, I think what you're asking, it's based on the evaluation set forth by the State Department of Education.
Okay, that's what I needed to know.
Cheryl, since this is going to be a template, on page one, the last paragraph, can the comma after coaching be corrected and a period after leader be added?
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just not following, what, what you're, what are you on?
I didn't tell you, huh?
Which page are you on?
One, I'm sorry, last paragraph.
Of the, of the actual report? Okay. Using protocols for coaching and explore, okay.
If you'll just make the comma over to...
Move the comma over, okay. Okay, we'll move the comma over and put a period at the end of the sentence, okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I am, I'm a, I'm a little bit, and I'm sure Ms. Elkins-Johnson probably is, probably thinking the same thing, I don't, I don't necessarily see, and it may just be me, I won't put words in your mouth, Ms. Elkins-Johnson, but I don't, I don't see the built-in connection tonight between the leadership, though I think that's very important, and the request for a report on the Common Core and the status of progress of that. I, I see built into what Dr. Parker mentioned under the leadership that there is a bullet that talks about Common Core, but I really think that probably that whole section, which is very important, should be done separately, and a piece on professional development specifically for Common Core should be shared, not necessarily tonight, but at some future point, because I, I think that, for me reading what Dr. Parker has shared with us, great information, all information about what they're going to be doing, but the specific piece of it that relates in detail about the type of professional development that's being done in the district specifically for Common Core is, for me, a priority, and so I would really ask that, that we get a lot more detail on that, and that's not to negate or, or to minimize, Dr. Parker, what you've talked about with regards to the ventures in leadership, but I would like to, I would like to know a lot more about what types of graduate courses are being offered for our teachers in Common Core now, how many have participated, how many have we been able to train, how many more we need to train, maybe an update on the last report that was done where the teachers sort of did, did a self-evaluation of them, of their skill sets and where they felt they were with Common Core, and where they feel they are now as a result of the summer and the graduate courses being taught, because I think that Ms. Elkins-Johnson's request in mine earlier was a lot more specifics about the, the Common Core. I'm still very concerned about just the whole, sort of like Ms. Anderson was talking about, the whole method of assessment, using the computers, and do we have a strategy for kids who are not comfortable yet with that, and is there a plan for helping them, kids who, for whom English is their second language, how do we address that, special ed kids who have to use a computer, how do we address that? So I think the whole method of assessment for Common Core and the professional development for Common Core probably needs to be revisited again with an update with those pieces in consideration separate from leadership. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
Mr. Chairman, I think I can shed a little light on that. First of all, we have plans in November to convene some focus groups that'll give us some idea about the progress they feel like they're making with the Common Core, so it'll take a while to complete those and get the report together, but we should, we are doing sort of a mid-year check on whether teachers feel like they're making the progress that they need, so we should be able to bring that information back to you. The leadership report tonight was really intended sort of as one column across that whole thing, not specifically related to the Common Core, but we know that student achievement is highly correlated to the, to the quality of leadership in a school, so that's kind of a separate strand, but in terms of leadership for the Common Core, I think we can write a great brief for you on the leadership development we're doing for leadership teams at every school that are, not only include the building principals and assistant principals, but people like instructional technology specialists, and really the whole group of people who can bring expertise to that, we'll be glad to provide you with that.
Thank you, Dr. McDaniel.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I'd also like to add to what Mr. Jackson's asked for, in our examples, I think pretty much every time we're getting fourth-grade examples, can we see that distributed across middle and high?
Certainly.
I know that we've done some work, but we need to be, you know, I'm sure we're working through other areas as well.
Okay, thank you.
The only question I have, Sue, is I see in your snapshots you have standards posted clear, in other words, the standards are, it wouldn't matter if it's Common Core, whatever the standards was, is that correct?
That's correct.
Instruction congruent to the standard, what, what does that mean? Does that mean there is one, or we developed one, or we, if I already, you know, what I'm saying, what does that mean?
As far as the instruction is congruent to the standard.
Yes.
In other words, if you've got something posted that says fractions, and the teacher is doing something with decimals, then that's not congruent with the standard, and that's, those are the kind of patterns that we're looking for.
Okay, well, I was hoping that would never happen, but I guess, I guess my point was that, is there a way that we teach to that standard, this, this, any different than what we're doing now, or are we developing any new curriculum or what?
We are looking at best practices, and there are some that are common across every grade level, elementary, middle, and high, but basically with the implementation teams and what we're doing with them and what they're doing with us will help drive that, but making sure that what they're teaching, what they say they're teaching and what they're doing with that, with the activities, match, that's, that's very important.
Okay, now, when you start assessing the, the standards, is, is there a problem with the assessment, whatever assessment vehicle we use, with the way we teach for them to, for us to use that assessment, is, is it congruent, or is it, does it match, I guess? Does it, that's my question. I mean, does it match in language, does it intend, does it match, you know what I'm saying? In other words, will the assessment drive how we teach? I guess that's my...
And I understand, I think I understand your question, but what we're focusing on are the standards and what we're doing with those standards, and there is a big shift in how we teach, and for some teachers, that's very easy, it's a natural for them, for others, it's going to be a little bit more difficult, and so we're, we're looking to find those areas that we can help them, but we're looking at, if we do the, if we teach the standards the way they need to be taught, giving children choice as well, then they, we feel that they will do well on whatever assessment that is given.
So we're not, we're not, we don't really know the assessment at this point?
No, and I'll let Dr. Hamm answer that.
I, I didn't think it.
There's a little bit of debate going on about which assessment, but clearly the, the federal requirements for assessment, as well as the state requirements, are that the, that, that the assessment that the state chooses measure the standards, and there is a process where those assessments are reviewed by the State Department of Education, approved by the State Board of Education, and through the Education Oversight Committee, so it's a pretty carefully vetted process for selecting the assessment.
And we really won't know until we do it, do the assessment, how well we match up? Okay.
Now, let me ask one other question, it's probably a difficult question to answer, I'm not quite sure, but do you find that it will be easier for the newer teachers to adjust to the Common Core teaching? But do you find that it will be easier for the newer teachers to adjust to the Common Core teaching versus the veteran teachers?
Well, it, it, I think that's a, that's a very good question. And we've, we've really kind of talked about that as well. I think it depends on the teacher, the individual. Um, a, a teacher coming right out of college, um, we find maybe has a little bit more, um, technology skills, if you will, so things come more naturally to them. But sometimes the newer teachers are a little hesitant, resilient to, um, hesitant to try to change or to do something, um, that they did not do in their undergraduate or graduate program. So it really depends, it depends on the teacher. So I don't, I don't want to say one way or the other.
Well, how are we planning to handle getting all of our teachers ready so that when, is it 2014 or do they change it to 2015? How do we plan to ensure that every teacher is on target and ready to do that? Because I know, uh, in one of the meetings they said some of the grade levels was already teaching that, but I'm not sure because some said they're not. So how can we ensure or what can the district do to ensure that every teacher is ready and comfortable with the Common Core?
Well, I will say that as you have approved some additional positions for us, that has helped greatly. Uh, in addition to that, we have our, um, instructional coaches who work with our brand-new teachers. And we have some retirees who are working with specific content areas, science, social studies, now ELA at the middle and high school. So we're able to reach more teachers in a broader sense than we would have been. So that part has helped us. But those folks, the instructional coaches, are now a part of our district implementation team. So they're hearing everything that we're hearing. We're discussing everything so that we're all on the same page.
Absolutely, thank you.
Great questions, uh, we'll continue on the discussion of this at, uh, later time. Uh, next item is new business, no actually requested, eleven-one reporter, our high school lunch administration and food service, uh, Dr. Ham, uh, who is going to be doing that?
Um, Mr. Carter and Dr. Parker each have a part of this report.
I guess I'm going to go first. I'm going to give you some, uh, some data points for the first thirty days of this year and then some from a hundred and eighty, uh, days of the whole school year last year.
Same data points we had in our packet?
Yes, ma'am.
I just want the highlights on it. When I asked, when I asked for this report, I basically, just to save you some time, I basically wanted the highlights and what you've given in our packet, um, was very in-depth. It was a very excellent report, but I didn't want you to, um.
I'll, I'll hit some quick highlights in.
That'd be great, okay.
The, the one thing that jumps out at you is we've had a steady increase in the free number of meals served and a steady, eh, well, it has increased again this year and reduced, although we did have one year where reduce went down and I think, we think that was a factor of kids going from reduced to free.
That was a good factor?
The kids had, had been reduced then now qualified for free.
Oh.
Uh, that, that was a one-year aberration like that. I, I think one of the key things that comes out of this is that the, uh, let me make sure I get the words right. The Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act, they're essentially legislating the taste out of the cafeteria. Um, they're, they're really controlling sodium intake. We're going to, we're not even allowed to put out salt and pepper for the children, um, although I'm sure it happens. Uh, the, the, we're required to monitor calories, um, and it, by grade level, uh, but it makes no difference to the regulation if you were a five-foot, five-hundred-and-ten-pound cheerleader or a six-foot-five, three-hundred-pound offensive lineman, the, the maximum calories are the same. It only applies to reimbursable meals. So a child could go in and buy ten pieces of pizza and, you know, that doesn't count at least for now. Now, that's going to change. Uh, the other thing that, um, that I find pretty interesting is I went and did my own quick research on Chick-fil-A sandwiches and Domino's pizza. A Chick-fil-A sandwich and a single slice of Domino's would not meet the federal requirements for sodium, fat or calories. And the other thing I would tell you is on the ninth of October, uh, our, our food service management team, Sedexo, sent surveys to all the principals to share with their staff, students and, and parents. Those are due back to thirty-first. I'll bring you those results, uh, when we're back. But I can typically, there, there's a remark section in there. Typically, kids say, "We want more pizza, we want Chick-fil-A back." Um, you know, that's the typical kinds of things we get back. And I'll be glad to answer questions on my piece. And I can expand on Dr. Parker. And when I said Dr. Parker, I didn't know who they were talking about. I had forgot.
Ms. Brill has a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I think the basis of our inquiry was that the children don't have enough time to stand in line.
That's, uh, Dr. Parker and I, we're both.
Right, right, and I think it's on the last page of your report. Um, you have a breakdown of high school lunch numbers. One thing to keep in mind, eh, eh, the enrollment's already there too, is to tell you how many students enrolled in each school, the latest enrollment numbers. All students do not eat lunch. They don't all leave there at the school. Seniors get to leave. Um, I think Westwood has a little more time at lunch simply because of where they're located, uh, in terms of the, the, uh, the school, in terms of proximity to like a McDonald's or somewhere where seniors like to go eat. So what we have there, we have the enrollment for each high school, approximate number of students that eat lunch on a daily basis, satellite stations, cafeteria lines and the times they have for lunch and the time for transition. And they find the high school principals here to help answer any questions, but they also find that, um, a survey was done in 2011. Basically, the same thing came out of that. Seventy-eight percent of the faculty and staff like having shorter lunchtimes. Um, they like having time to tutor students at lunch. Students like to be tutored, uh, during that time. Clubs would be going on at that time. They use that time to socialize. And for, for most students especially, I would think at the high school, and I know definitely at the middle school level, you limit the amount of free time that they have. You have to have a lot of construct, uh, constructive things going on for them and a lot of structure. But, um, the lunches, they're, the only complaint I've, I've heard, and I, and I would think I would hear more, um, came the other evening when I talked with the parent, she had not talked with the school principal. She has since talked with the school principal, has been invited to the school to observe for herself just to see how fast the lunch goes. Um, with these times, they're usually finished, um, they have at least ten minutes left after eating to socialize or, or do whatever it is that they want to do during their lunchtime.
I have a copy of that 2011 survey. I would be happy to email it to all the board members. I, I didn't get it till this morning.
That was requested by the, um, Health Advisory Council, uh, back in 2011.
Wendell Shelton did that study to include.
Very detailed report.
This answered my question. Both of these reports answered the questions that I was looking for. Particularly, I like how you answered each high school, the regular lines or satellite locations, um, the times, and when I look at the, the different high school breakdown with the enrollment of each school, um, and the amount of time that they have to eat. And I would say too, Westwood possibly would have a larger, a, a, longer time because of the size of the school from kids, children getting from lo- one location to the cafeteria from another location. That is a large school.
And any students that want to leave campus, you know, the seniors can leave campus. It, it, you know, there's no place really close by. And they are, I believe, they're the last high school to take in in terms of transportation. They start a little bit later.
Um, they're all about the same. I'd have to go back. I think they're all, start roughly at the same time around, I think it's eight-thirty-five for, yeah. And I, I would like to, on the, eh, when you look at the regular lines, that's a function of design. So when Ridgeview was built and it was built off of somebody else's design, it only has two regular lines. Uh, Spring Valley has six.
There's three up here.
Everybody else has four. Uh, when we opened Westwood, we took one point-of-sale, uh, uh, cart from Ridgeview and one from Blythewood and moved it to Westwood since we were moving students out of those two schools. If we start to see it, ma'am?
We're having two different figures here. What did you say, who's got, who, who did you say have two?
In the report that Dr.?
Ridgeview has two, has two cafeteria.
Mine states Ridgeview has three.
No, no, Spring Valley has ten. Because they have six regular lines.
You're talking about total, you're talking about total.
I'm talking about total.
You say ten total.
I'm talking about total, well, here on my total.
My, mine disagrees with Dr. Washington's for some reason, um, on two different locations. And I've got to go back and get that straight. But one thing I know.
Yeah, let's get that straight because I have here, I totaled mine up. When I did my, when I, uh, reviewed my board brief, in Blythewood, I have a total of six lines.
That's correct.
Spring Valley, I have a total of, of six regular lines and three satellite lines, a total of nine.
That's correct.
Ridge, uh, Richland Northeast, I have a total of seven, four and three. Ridgeview, I have seven.
Correct.
Three regular, four satellite. Westwood, four regular, two satellite, which is total of six. Now, I heard something about a ten or eleven.
Well, and Dr. Washington's report shows ten. My, my report came from our food service people. I didn't know till tonight, they disagreed. I'll go back and check that. I'm sure if I asked the principals, they could tell me exactly.
Mine came from the principals.
It's, I guess the bottom line is if you go into any one of our cafeterias, twenty minutes into the lunch period, there's virtually no lines, if any at all, kids are done. So they either choose not to get in line because they don't want to get in line or they bring their own lunch or just.
So when you guys do these reports in the future, could you get together and make sure it matches so we'll have a good idea so I don't go back and tell a parent, "Oh, no, this school definitely have X amount of lines" because I was told that and then I'm proven wrong.
And I'm not sure why ours disagreed, but I'll fix it.
I just don't want to be embarrassed in, in defending the district, is all I'm saying.
I had a question.
Appreciate it, thank you.
With the satellite stations, are they selling the same food as the cafeteria lines? So it's all the same?
You should be able to go to any satellite and get a fully reimbursable meal. Now, we can't do some of the hotline stuff, the, what I would call the, the meat and three kind of line. That, you can't do that at the satellite stations, but you can do all the other reimbursable meals there. We did that intentionally so that there's no stigma between free and reduced kids and full-pay kids. So eh, it used to be the only kids eating in cafeteria were the free and reduced kids. Everybody else bought Chick-fil-A and something else. So we're trying to blur those lines so that no, that no longer happens. So you, you should be able to get just about everything at a satellite that you can get in the regular.
Jack, um, the number of kids who are eating versus the number of kids who are at these schools, probably somewhere around thirty-five percent, I guess, just doing it quickly in my head. About thirty-five percent of kids who go to any one of these high schools participating in the cafeteria. Has that number gone up, gone down since Sedexo took over? Is that, how, how does that stand when, before they took over in terms of where we, numbers eating versus now?
It's probably the same. I'd have to go back because we didn't track the data then.
I, I'd like to know that. I'd like to know whether or not as a result of Sedexo, that number has changed significantly. Because the whole notion of, well, not a lot of kids eat in cafeteria, I'm wondering why. And has that changed drastically? If you just pick Blythewood, for example, uh, these numbers indicate that twelve-hundred kids don't participate in the cafeteria, only four-hundred-and-sixty-nine are. I'd like to know, has that radically changed in the last three years since Sedexo took over?
Uh, I can tell you we lost money in the cafeterias because of participation before Sedexo came on board. So again, our in-house folks did not even track that.
Okay, could you track then, since, since Sedexo has been on board? Has that number declined, stays the same or gone up in terms of participation?
This thirty, thirty-first, the first thirty days of this year, it has gone down slightly. In the previous years, it's been on a steady increase. Now, percentage-wise, I'd have to go back and look at those numbers. I'll be, I'll be happy to do that.
So Dex, Sedexo is making money, they're not going under?
We're making money. Um, the way it works is we have a contractual agreement with Sedexo that we pay them a certain amount of money for every meal served, which is recorded in, on the computers. Then they guarantee so much money back to the district. They also pay, uh, where we used to get money from Chick-fil-A and Domino's and those places for athletics. Sedexo now, through the food service program, uh, has replaced that revenue. So they, the schools are, uh, still getting revenue from where they used to get it from. Uh, but we lost money the last year of in-house operations. Uh, as you know, food service is the only business-based operation in the district. They are have, they have to be self-supporting. So they are, I'm sure Sedexo is making some money because that's the business they're in. But the bottom line is we're making money, but that we did not make before.
But, but, yeah, but, but I may, just kind of, but, but the issue for me is, we, you're making, I'm wondering if you're making money at the elementary, middle level where kids don't have a choice.
Right.
Eh, and at the high school level, so that's why I specifically asked about it at the high school. So you could be making money, but if you're losing kids and not eating as many ki- not as many kids eating at the high school level, I'd be curious to know why. That, that's why I focused specifically on high school where seniors and others can leave campus and elementary, middle kids can't leave campus and have to, they're forced to either bring a lunch eating cafeteria.
I, I can get you some numbers, but historically, we've lost at high schools because it's got the highest manpower requirements. And the manpower compared to the number of kids eating, it just never works out. You know, in an ideal world, uh, we'd find another way to do high schools because it really does, we'd really do lose money there. But because of the free and reduced, we have no choice, we have to provide.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I was going to suggest, since we have some of the high school principals here, if they could just speak on that matter about whether or not we have decrease or increase in students eating in the cafeteria. So if we could get maybe two of our high school principals to speak on that for us?
Let's see, Keith and I see, Ralph and who's hiding? Anybody, Bear, Bear's not hiding, he's right there.
Just to speak specifically about Blythewood High, it's kind of hard to determine because of numbers because our enrollment has changed so dramatically over the past four to five years. Um, as far as the percentage of participation, I'd say it's probably been about the same since Sedexo has come on board. I don't, I haven't looked at actual numbers, but just from, from observation, I'd say it's about the same since Sedexo has come on board. Before, we probably had a lot more students buying their lunch on campus. It doesn't necessarily mean they were buying it from the cafeteria because our coaches were bringing in the Chick-fil-A's and the Hardee's hamburgers and the Domino's pizzas. And they were working those canteens. And as Mr. Carter said, now that, um, profit is being replaced by Sedexo and those coaches are doing other things during lunchtime rather than working in the canteen stations. So the, since Sedexo has been on board, my guess, based on my observation, is it's been about the same since they've come on board, but maybe a little bit different since they've taken over. But I think a larger number of our students were eating at those satellite stations because of the types of food being sold at that time compared to, to now.
How are you doing it in thirty minutes, Keith?
Um, well, we, we have, uh, the lines inside the food court and then we have other satellite stations throughout the campus. And so student can be at the far end of the campus. They don't have to go all the way down to the food court to get their lunch. They can go right around the corner at the end of the hallway, grab a basket and then go back into their teacher's classroom where they're doing tutoring or they're having clubs or hanging out with their favorite teacher or sitting in the hallway with their friends. So there's a lot of open freedom and not, not everyone has to go to the food court to eat. So, um, we're one of those schools, you know, we have a, a thirty-five-minute lunch period from the lunch bell, from the time lunch starts to the time lunch ends, and we're done serving about fifteen minutes in. Now, some students continue to trickle through, but that's because they do their socializing on the front end of lunch rather than on the back end of lunch. And then they come in so they don't have to wait in line. But, um, our, our lunch lines are pretty clear about the first fifteen minutes of lunch.
You know, and I think I'll answer it two ways. Uh, when I was at Northeast, uh, the participation, uh, with our food service was, we were only serving about two-hundred-and-twenty kids a day at lunch and that was a concern to us. And I know we went, worked really hard when Sedexo came in and we moved that number from about two-twenty to, to close to five-hundred, uh, a day. So that was a big increase that we saw over that time and it stays in there. At Westwood, we're see, uh, serving close to six-hundred students, which is, uh, close to fifty percent of our population. And, uh, uh, but, you know, like Keith, uh, said, we, uh, you know, we're through within the first twenty minutes, you know? Although we have a longer time, we have a longer time because we're so far out and we wanted to make sure our students were safe. In traveling, the ones who could leave campus, you know, they have to jump on the interstate, they go down. And we just didn't want to put any of our students at jeopardy by putting them on a timeframe. So we've done that. We've also added, uh, quite a number of tutoring and we've added more intramurals in there to kind of buffer that time. And it's worked out fine, but again, within the first twenty minutes, our, uh, you know, we're serving, uh, six-hundred students with six lines and it's going along just perfectly.
I can, I can speak from the perspective of what it was like, I, I guess, about six or seven years ago, um, from what I remember. And, um, many of our students were, like Keith stated earlier, was just opting to eat, um, from Chick-fil-A, Burger King, pizza hut or Domino's pizza. So, uh, based off, uh, that observation and what I currently see now, there are more students that are staying on campus to eat in the satellite, uh, lines or, uh, getting food out of the main lines. Of course, we still have students that are leaving campus. Uh, each day, our seniors.
Of course, we still have students that are leaving campus, uh, each day, our seniors, uh, to get lunch. But from the perspective of seeing more students staying on campus, eating, uh, using the service, I would think that more students are staying, uh, on campus using the service as, as, as of today.
Thanks, Bear.
Thank you.
Mister Chairman, I, I have a question. How, how do you guys accommodate for the different, um, lunch minutes, right? So if you have forty-two versus, where, where does the extra twelve minutes come from? Or where does it go to depending on the school?
I, now, I will, uh, like on, on the report, it says we have ten minutes in transition. We really don't have a ten-minute transition. What we did was, we simply included the time that we actually start the dismissal process. Because most of our students are done eating lunch, as opposed to waiting, we just go ahead and, and, uh, and start the dismissal process a little earlier so that we can cut down on the number of tardies that we have coming back from lunch going into fifth period. So we really only have a five-minute, uh, transition from the end of lunch, but we're able to transition a little earlier because we don't have as many kids waiting in line to receive lunch because of the number of satellites and the number of lines that we have. We do have ten different locations, the six main lines and the four satellites spread out throughout campus. So that's, that's how we accommodate, uh, at, at Spring Valley. I don't know about the other schools.
Just to, to tell a little difference between Spring Valley and Blythewood, Spring Valley has a seven-period day, Blythewood has an eight-period day. So we have an extra period built into our schedule, which means we've got to squeeze time from somewhere. So our lunch is a little bit shorter, but our dismissal time is a little bit later than Spring Valley High. So we make up the time and our transition time, I'm not sure about your transition time between classes? Six minutes, ours is five. So we squeeze those minutes in different places and our schedule's set up differently, a little differently. And that's why our lunch period is different than Spring Valley's.
I'd like to hear Ralph's answer to it, since he has the largest amount of time.
You know, and what we, what we do is, we do two different bells. Uh, you know, uh, we have a thirty, I think it's a roughly thirty-five minutes or thirty-six minutes, and we ring a beautification bell. And that's one where we, uh, ask all of our students to start cleaning up. We had a huge problem, students leaving mess, so we add that bell in there, which gives us ten minutes to get to our next class. We do the five minutes there and then we do add, you know, have the five minutes, you know, warning bell to get to there, which gives us our forty-two to forty-seven minutes. Uh, and then, you know, I think what, you know, what we do is, we do the same thing. We look at it, but one of the things that drives us is the availability of the buses in the afternoon. Because we don't want to end at the exact same time that other schools do and have a twenty-minute buffer in there where we're having to chase kids, you know, there. So the, the buses come a little bit later to us and so we kind of carve it out there. But we make sure that we have enough time in our classes and, uh, we have a five minutes, I think, between each class the same way. So it's, you know, we just kind of make sure we're, we're looking at the class sections, I mean, the class times in each section.
How many periods do you have?
A seven.
Mister Chairman, my, my last question, I'm only asking this because my daughter told me I had to ask this. She, she told me when she started out in kindergarten, I think they got like six chicken nuggets and then last year it went down to five, and this year it's down to four. And so she came home and told me I had to ask, uh, where her chicken nuggets went. So, uh, but I, I count that in.
Federally, whatever, regulated out by the feds.
Is that?
That's true, I mean, it's calorie, we're, we're required to, to control the caloric intake of children. And can you imagine the food service lady sitting there trying to figure out, was that two hundred calories or is that two hundred and ten calories? It's nearly impossible, but we're required to at least make an effort. And that is exactly why serving sizes are going down.
I just want to make sure it wasn't Sedexo making sure they were making a dime. So I, I have an answer for now.
They are, they do better when they serve a lot of kids. So they're trying to figure out ways to serve more kids, not less. So, and, and I will tell you, my daughter went to Ri, Richland Northeast for one year and graduated from Ridgefield three years there, never ate a single meal in the cafeteria. Chick-fil-A every day. Fortunately, she's tall and skinny, so she can get away with it, so.
I'm, I'm wanting to a, answer Mister Manning's question. Um, I recently heard that, um, chick, uh, chicken nuggets were deemed unhealthy because there's not enough chicken in them.
And that is another factor, by the way. We don't fry anything anymore, we took all the fryers out, we actually did that before Sedexo came on board. And that's the other thing that comes back in the surveys, we want our fried chicken back, so.
I've heard that.
Jack, one of the things I noticed by two thousand fourteen, everything's going to be whole grain. What happens if you've got students that are allergic to the whole grain?
We have gluten, we have gluten items to accommodate.
So they will allow other substitutes, okay?
Same thing with peanut butter allergies, we have to address all that in the cafeterias.
Well, listen, I really do appreciate this report and the purpose for me asking for it was because we had two different parents to address it. And I wanted the public to know that we are concerned about their concerns. But I also do know that several students have told me that they have ample time if they do not socialize. And I kind of think that might be what the mother meet, needs to monitor. The socialization prior to going to the food line, go to the food line, get what you want before it's gone, and then go socialize. So I don't want anyone to think that I was picking on the principals of the schools. I wanted the public to know that we are concerned about their concerns. And you've proven here with a very thorough report, uh, that we are doing a very good job with our serving lines and our cafeterias. Appreciate that, thank you.
Well, yeah, I had this for a short period of time, this report. But whenever you talk about food in district two, it always lasts, I've learned it lasts a lot longer than it should. And another thing I learned is legit, this is, I, this is what we've been talking about logistics, with friends we've been talking about. We find ways to do it, to make this happen. And that's what these guys, uh, these principals are doing. They're, they're, they're finding ways to make it happen within whatever period they've decided to do. They've studied this and I really appreciate the job you do because that's obviously part of your job, but it's something that you, you really make, uh, happen. And we have very few complaints overall. I mean, except in the first year, we always get, get them in the first year. But I think as the year, as the year goes on, these things get worked out, if there are issues that need to be worked out. Thank you, Jack, appreciate your report. Next item is, uh, this is Dr. Miley's first quarter, quarterly financial statement. Dr. Miley.
Mister Chairman, Mister Chairman, um, you all have the, the quarterly statement in your, in your briefing package. I'll just hit some of the highlights. One of the things, as you know, this is early in the year and our revenue stream and our expenditure streams are, are highly uncorrelated and that the revenues come at different patterns. However, as you see from the revenue sheet, that we've received about twelve percent of our total revenues so far this quarter. That compares to about eleven and a half percent last year and about eleven percent the year before. So it roughly is on target with prior years in terms of our revenue picture. If you look at our expenditures to date, they're about twenty-one point eight percent of our total expenditure, of total budget. That again, uh, is, is again, we don't want to say that, oh, we're spending more than we have. The revenue stream is different than the expenditure stream. But again, looking back at prior years, that's roughly right in line with the twenty-one percent, twenty-one and a half percent of the last two fiscal years also. So in terms of revenues and expenditures, they're right in line with the last three years. As the special accounts, in terms of EIA funding, again, that revenue stream is different. Our expenditure stream is, does not match it, but we're right on target. We have about twenty million dollars left. Same thing with our special revenue funds, we've got about seventeen million dollars, we've expended as expected. The next, uh, the next page is our, uh, the board accounts. One of the things that is, uh, is, does stand out a little bit in terms of the rev, the revenue and expenditure here, one of the items that we are going to address in terms of coding is that we actually have some substantial dues included in the travel line item in this budget, in which we pay a lot of, for instance, the School Board Association dues are fairly strong and they also come out of what's called, coded here as travel. So it distorts what we, you might think that, uh, the board has spent thirty-three thousand dollars so far this year on travel, but in fact, that's not the case, most of that is School Board Association dues. If you look at last year's similar report, uh, we were actually in worse shape. We had, we expended ten thousand more than our budget line item last year at this same quarterly report. So again, that's something that we, we think we can address with some coding that will reflect our expenditure pattern better in the future. In the, uh, last, uh, two sections, we have our, uh, our bond referendum data. As you can see, we have substantial revenues, uh, set aside for our future bond referendum items. For instance, uh, school, uh, elementary number twenty, the finishing of elementary nineteen, and the, uh, learning center in the future. So we feel we're comfortable there in terms of our total funding capacity and, and, and bonding, uh, funds for future capital investment. Same thing with, uh, our eight percent, the last page, our eight percent capital improvement. We, as you see, we have several years of allocations and expenditure there as for the eight percent funding. We're on, 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 uh, on pace to meet our obligations for our eight percent funding for this current fiscal year. And with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Couple of questions, Mister Miley, it was a good thorough report. But for, I don't know for some of us, but for me, on, I don't know what's, my pages are not numbered here.
Well, one thing we're going to do is, we're going to start numbering the pages, I appreciate, I apologize for that.
I'll tell you what, it's the one here that states the utilization schedule fund, five sixteen.
Yes, ma'am.
On that page?
The eight percent, yes, ma'am.
If, would help me, where you have the descriptions and you have like a two thousand nine, eight payment number one, claim number B dash two. I have no earthly idea what that's referring to.
Okay.
Sort of a, a chart so that I can...
We can do that, we can provide more detail.
Maybe I'm the only one that doesn't understand it.
Be glad to provide more detail.
I have no idea how to match that up with what.
One of my concerns is that entire page is pretty messy as it is and so it's a lot of data there. But we'll be glad to provide and break that out if you'd like in terms of...
Or if you could explain maybe perhaps what this is? Because I've not seen this, I don't recall, um, seeing this before. So I have no understanding of what, you know, this ten million dollars is or...
Those were the bond issues in previous years from the referendum.
So this part is a bond?
That's the revenue schedule on the left, where we generated funds from bond issues back to two thousand and nine.
So transfer from funds five-ten for Anna Boyd project, that came out of that same bond?
Excuse me, say that again.
Under, uh, transfers, right under the, the first?
Transfer fund five-ten to Anna Boyd, yes, correct.
So that would come out of that same fund?
That came out of the group of funds from those bond issues.
That's what I meant, group of funds. Okay, it was just difficult for me to read and understand when I read that. The only other question, Mister Chairman, that I had, um, two questions. We talked about a couple of years ago, and you were not here, so I'm not sure who could answer this, but we had a survey done on the use of telephones. And did we change those companies the way that the, um, report? People who reported made some suggestions that we, uh, changed the way we were using telephones in the district to cut the cost. That just jumped out on me when I saw this telephone cost on here that was budgeted for a certain...
I do not know that answer, but I can find out that answer unless someone else, uh, in the room can help me. But I do not know that answer.
That'll be fine, I don't want you to take a lot of time researching it. But I'd like to know what the difference is. If we did change, was there a big difference in the, the amount of money that we are expending?
Probably.
Hey, but you, you remember what I'm talking about? Where they had each school or each person was using different, not, not each person, but several people were using different telephone companies and it was, I thought, cheaper to use one company for the district or something?
I think it was decided a month, it was going, it designated per school, they were going to go on a contract.
Yeah, that's what I'm, did we do that?
I will find out.
My last question is, if somebody can help me with my memory recall. I thought we put something in the budget at one point for cheerleader uniforms. When I looked at the uniforms, um, the cost for football, did we do that?
I don't know, we're doing for cheerleaders.
We just got a report on cheerleaders? Is that all it was, was a report on the cost of cheerleaders?
We got a complaint from Karen about how much they cost.
Is that what it was?
There was a concern a few years ago about the cheerleading uniforms, is it considered a sport? Maybe someone, the high school principals can address it far better than I can. But there was a concern about, do we consider it as a sport? Or why is it so much more expensive than, you know, football players or basketball playing, uh, players? If anybody will have any athletic director chats.
Only reason I ask that, when I saw that in the report and, uh, this summer, a parent, a couple of parents asked me, I think they, I don't forget what the figure was, and I told her I do remember us going through that subject. But I was thinking perhaps we put some funding in there to offset the cost of the uniforms, but I was not sure. And we did not do that, is what you're saying. Okay, I can be clear on that then, thank you. That's all I have.
Any other questions?
Mister Chairman? Dr. Miley, help me a little bit if you will, on the eight percent funding for, uh, the current year. Does this suggest that we're probably not going to, um, spend all of it the, the current year or will be expended somewhere along the way, between now and June thirtieth?
In terms of the individual, and since we divide those in essence to maintenance and repairs and IT, my understanding from both of those sides are that there are encumbrances and plans for spending the entire budget.
Yeah, I have a six hundred and thirty thousand dollar expenditure for a new cooling tower at Ridgeview, uh, that we just got through the bid period and the protest period. I have two, uh, fire alarms at about a hundred and eighty-five thousand each, uh, that, uh, final design is at OSF for review. Uh, I'll, I promise you, I will spend every penny I've got.
Okay, and in part two of that question, and the eight percent money for twenty fourteen, Mister Chairman, we've gotten that, we've approved that, because I probably, I'm sure we did, I just missed that.
Twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen?
The twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, if I'm reading this correctly. On here, it's the twenty fourteen, eight percent, and there's a list of categories and funding.
We haven't s, in fact, I just sent an email to all the principals today, asking them for their twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen input. That generally comes to you in a January, early February, uh, timeframe for your consideration and approval. So at least...
So what am I looking at here?
Thirteen, fourteen.
And the one below it is what then, twelve, thirteen?
Yes, sir.
And Jack, you said you got a half million dollars, a six hundred thousand dollar expenditure in thirteen, fourteen, but am I reading the balance correctly here? Is that six point nine million or am I not reading that correctly?
I wish I had that much.
I mean, two point two million, I'm sorry.
That's two point.
Two point two million.
I've got, and I'm not sure if encumbrances are showing up here.
They're not.
Okay, I've got other stuff encumbered.
Okay, I'm just asking. Six hundred thousand, oh, and out of two point two million, you still got one point six million.
Wish I had that much left, I promise you. I got principals asking me for stuff now that I, I'm trying to figure out ways to squeeze it for them. And all, and, and you might recall, R and E had, uh, a good bit of stuff and that's mostly encumbered, not all paid out yet.
Thank you.
Northeast is looking really, really good, you've done an excellent job.
I think it looks great.
Mister Chair. Yes, um, for, for, and this, I know it's a future agenda item, but while we're on the topic, I'd like for us to look at our, uh, eight, eight percent. I think we're up to like a four-year payback period on the eight percent bonds and have a discussion of maybe trying to reduce that, uh, down to a three-year, a, a two-year potentially, uh, payback period.
I think you're, I think that's a good goal to go to. I think we can do it in a, uh, hopefully a regimented manner, just like we do a lot of things in our district. Okay, any other questions?
We're still within our range of ten to twelve percent here.
I'm sorry.
We're still in our range of our reserve funds.
Is our reserve fund still remaining close to twelve, the twelve percent, or is it, is it in the year that we make?
It's currently a close to fifteen percent, sir.
Current basis. I know because of the flow stream of the, uh, you know, our income, it may change.
We will know, we will know exactly once our auditors finish our audit. And that's what I'll be reporting as soon as they finish, but I think it's going to be in that neighborhood. Yes.
Yes.
Dr. Miley, I just want to commend you on a great report. But can you tell the community on the motion that Mrs. Anderson made earlier, how much savings were... on the mission that Mrs. Anderson made earlier, how much savings we're gonna have by adding those four resource officers by that grant? Because I think it's very important that they know.
The grant will save us approximately, excuse me, I've got, here. Think about six hundred thousand dollars over the first three years. Yes, ma'am. Um, the funding arrangement that we, given that it'll be grant, grant funds from the federal, federal government, the matching portion that we have with the sheriff's office will save the districts about six hundred thousand dollars.
After the three years, we are responsible for?
After the three, after the three years, we're responsible for our share, similar to our arrangement today, and, and after the arra, after the third year, we'll still be paying approximately the same amount we're currently paying on a per SRO basis. Yes, ma'am.
Unless we can find some more fund grants out there. Arlene?
Thank you. Um, any other questions? Well, let's move on to agenda items for our next meeting.
The, um, first of all, mention that our next meeting is at Polo Road Elementary Schools. Um, we're going back to Polo Road. Everybody be there, right?
We've got a weeks of, we've got a three-week start.
And, uh, the items on the agenda are faculty focus, uh, report on, it's the updated data snapshot for you that Jeff Potts will be doing, the, uh, faculty advisory committee recommendations for the upcoming school year calendar, and a report on elementary school nineteen, uh, student assignment plans.
We will put that for action requests. All right. Any other items at this time?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Um, it's, uh, I, I'm not stealing the thunder, but I, I want to put a reminder because I don't see it here. I think Mr. Jackson had mentioned that, um, uh, after my, a report that I requested for third grade reading, there was a request for fourth and fifth grade, uh, reading, I think we wanted to see some data surrounding that because there was a drop-off, if I'm not mistaken.
That's correct.
I didn't, I just didn't see it on the list, and I, um, by the way, I do like the way the list is laid out so that we can sort of see what's coming up and-
We'll put that into either, um, the next, the, the next meeting. How about that? We'll drop that one in.
That, that's fine. Thanks.
Good. The meeting after next, okay? Any other items? Hearing notice, our second time of public participation, there was a lot of information tonight. Anybody in, in the, uh, audience would like to comment on it, um, raise your hand, I'll ask you to come forward. Seeing no hands, we'll move on to board superintendent comments. Um, I'll go from, um, right to left. Mr. Jackson?
No comments, Mr. Chairman.
Inspector?
And thank you.
I just want to commend, um, Ms. Barber's staff, uh, for having us. School looks wonderful, and the little children were simply lovely, gorgeous, they were little soldiers, and I just thoroughly enjoyed their performance, and thank you all for, for being here.
Ms. Brill?
Uh, I too want to thank Ms. Barber for your hospitality and, uh, appreciate the green team. Did I get that right?
Yes.
Green steps, and it's not too lo, young to learn, and I'm, I'm really glad you're making that emphasis. Uh, and thank you too for the book. My three-year-old grandson loves everything that I bring for him to read, so thank you, and thank you for the wrapping it up. And thank you, good meeting, Mr. Chair, and I appreciate all the information that we received tonight, um, and all the work that went into it, um, and a good job, Dr. Miley. I know you're still new, but you're doing great. Thank you.
Ms. Jefferson?
Yes, just a few, um, comments. Back in September, I had given a flyer to Dr. Hamm to pass out to the principals. It's a workshop that's coming in, um, Charleston, South Carolina, February sixth through ninth, and it's on Common Core. I had the opportunity to visit those workshops on last year, so we really, as a district, need to take advantage of those Common Core workshops. Again, um, you can see Dr. Hamm for the information to the principals. I would love to see some of our teachers there because it's a great experience. Also, um, a great report on the high school lunch, um, report, so thank you guys, and thank you to the high school principals for getting up, sharing your information. I really appreciate that. And also, it's always a pleasure to be back here at Pontiac High School, this Pontiac Elementary, actually, this was my first official teaching position here at Pontiac First Grade, so I'm always excited to come back to Pontiac, and I look forward to seeing you guys on Thursday morning, so thank you.
Mr. Manning?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Um, I'm excited, uh, to visit, um, IB programs tomorrow, or having some, uh, federal folks come in, uh, or IB folks, I mean, for some of the programming, so I'm excited to be there for that. Um, uh, holding true to my promise, uh, Ms. Anderson mentioned that some students don't have access to computers or internet at home. Uh, the Richland County Bond Referendum for the libraries is coming up on November fifth. Um, our libraries are an excellent way to, uh, provide access to those students who don't have it, and in fact, I know, uh, the library close to my home, one of the things that's gonna be expanded is a computer area because the computers are constantly full and busy when you walk in there in the evenings. Um, so again, November fifth, um, I would ask you to join me, again, James Manning as an individual, uh, to come, uh, vote yes for our libraries. Thank you.